Thank you all. We are running a little bit behind, but we are happy to welcome all of you to the joint meeting of the State Board of Education and the Tennessee Higher Education Commission. Before we begin, we will take the role to ensure that we have a quorum. Casey Griffin for the State Board of Education.
Mr. Balcom. Mr. Cobbins.
Here.
Mr. Darnell.
Here.
Mr. Eby.
Here.
Mr. Edwards. Ms. Kim. Mr. Ferguson.
Here.
Ms. Tucker.
Here.
Ms. Chairman. Hargrove.
Here.
Ms. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you, and I do want to note that Mr. Mike Edwards is excused from this meeting.
All right, Madam Secretary for the Tennessee Higher Education Commission, please call the role.
Chairman Cope.
Present.
Commissioner Dishner.
Present.
Secretary Hargit.
Present.
Commissioner Johnston.
Present.
Commissioner Coben.
Here.
Treasurer Lillard.
Here.
Commissioner Morrison.
Here.
Commissioner Roach.
Here.
Commissioner Stafford. Commissioner Soliak. Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Commissioner Wharton. Comptroller Wilson. Commissioner Witten.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have 10 present.
Very good, thank you.
I also want to make note that we are changing the order of some of the agenda items. We are moving item three, Support for Tennessee Third-Grade Reading, to the first agenda item. I do want to say that this is a meeting that the State Board looks forward to each year, the opportunity to come together with the Tennessee Higher Education Commission, especially because of the joint responsibilities that we share. So I do want to turn it over to Mr. Evan Cope for his, as Chairman of the Tennessee Area Education Commission, for his comments.
Thank you, Chairman Hargrove, and just in the interest of time, since we are running behind, I just want to echo Chairman Hargrove's comments and say how, you know, happy we are, as the Tennessee Higher Education Commission, to be here with the Board of Education and continue our joint mission to improve the quality of life for all Tennesseans. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Sarah Morrison and Mr. Mike Kraus for the important first item.
Support for Tennessee Third-Grade Reading. Great, yes, thank you, Chairman Hargrove. We're excited to talk about third-grade reading jointly with the State Board and the Higher Education Commission. As someone who sits on both, it's really a pleasure to get to have our boards together, and I'm excited for the conversation today to talk about a lot of our areas of shared work and responsibility. I think these boards, particularly during times of transition, as we see over the course of the next transition cycle, will be even more important as leaders in our state when it comes to sort of setting our goals and trajectory around K-12 and post-secondary education. So, in conversations with my colleague here, Mike Kraus, I really wanted to go on the record and hear more about sort of the work on early grades reading, as it really does set up our foundation for all that we do in K-12 and certainly post-secondary in terms of putting students on the path to success. So, I don't know, Mike, if you want to say anything else to open, but then I know we're going to turn it over to Commissioner McQueen for an update on some of the state's work around early grades reading.
This is new territory, certainly, for both boards to be jointly thinking through and offering a resolution in support of a third-grade reading standard, certainly for the Higher Education Commission. This is new. I think what we recognize is we'll never see those students on our campuses if they're not reading on grade level in third grade, and every single teacher teaching those kids came from our institutions. So we have a great responsibility here as higher ed to make sure that the early grades reading standards are being implemented with fidelity.
All right, I'm going to share a bit about our early literacy work. This will be brief, but I do have several slides, but we'll run through them fairly quickly. A reminder of the vision statement the Department of Education put out several years ago, almost three years ago now, that districts and schools in Tennessee will exemplify excellence and equity such that all students are equipped with the knowledge and skills to successfully embark upon their chosen path in life. The idea behind the mission statement is to ensure that students are set up for success and that the high school diploma actually sets them up like a passport to wherever they want to go, as opposed to closing down options, which is why we believe that this second overarching goal we have as part of our strategic plan is so critical. We know that third-grade reading proficiency either opens up that doors or can potentially shut those doors to opportunity every single year. And so we put forth a goal that 75% of Tennessee third graders would be proficient in reading by 2025. And contextually, there is no state in the country that has 75% of their third graders reading proficiently. We have some in the '60s, but we have no state at 75%. And the multiple times I've presented this to the General Assembly, they have said, "Well, why isn't it 100%?" It will be 100%, but we are setting ourselves up for what we believe is a stretch goal, but a possible goal if we continue to move forward with urgency. This sets us up from a place where we started a campaign. So we started with a vision, we started with a goal, and then we put forth a campaign called Read to Be Ready. Read to Be Ready has multiple initiatives under it, and I'm going to talk about a few of those, but ultimately, it is a unifying force, and we're so thrilled that now higher education will be part of this unifying vision around reading. For context, I thought this slide would be of interest to you. You can look back in 2007 at the first four bar graphs, and then in 2017, let me tell you what you're looking at. This is basically a comparison in third through eighth-grade literacy around what we were seeing. This is reading on the first two bar graphs and math on the second. When we would give our students a state test in 2007 in reading, we showed that 91% of our students were reading proficiently at the third-grade level. So we had met our goal, it looked like, back in 2007. The problem is, when they would take any kind of national benchmark test, and this happens to be a comparison to NAEP, the National Assessment of Education Progress, we saw that somewhere between 20 and 30% of kids were proficient. We saw the same type of figure when students would take the ACT. We were showing more like between 20 and 30% of kids were hitting the ELA benchmark or the English Language Arts benchmark in 11th grade. So we knew that our state tests, our state expectations, were not aligned to what the national expectations were. So fast forward to 2017, 10 years later, we now have an alignment between our standards, after five standard changes and multiple test changes. We have an alignment between what we're actually seeing on our state results and our state standards with what we would see on NAEP or the ACT. That's important because now every year, we're not surprised by what we get on NAEP. We're not surprised by ACT results because yearly, we're getting better information about where our kids really are, which allows us to instructionally support them differently year by year. So quickly, let me define what you're seeing here. We started this Read to Be Ready campaign by going across the state and saying, "What's actually happening in classrooms? Why do we only see a third of our students reading at a proficient level in all of the standards that we have in Tennessee by the end of third grade?" And quite frankly, this was telling. You can see data from September of 2017 and data from January of 2018 by the two bar graphs, and they're similar in results, but only about half of our observations actually included, this is grades kindergarten through third grade, only about half of these classrooms included text, T-E-X-T-S, like literal books, things that kids were reading that were worthy of student time and attention, meaning much of what the student was doing was not actually in books, or it wasn't in books that were worthy of the standards and the expectations of the standards. And then, we did some observations specifically around what was happening in those classrooms, not just what they were reading and actually the time that they were reading, but what tasks were they doing. And less than 10% of our observed lessons, again, in kindergarten through third grade, actually showed that questions that were being asked around literacy, what they were reading, and the tasks that they were asked to do were integrated with the standards at the level of the depth of the expectation. So what's happening in the classroom was not ultimately aligned to the expectation. Then, we saw that very few foundational skill lessons actually included opportunities for students to practice the skill. So the skill was being taught in isolation, but it wasn't being applied then to something they were physically reading. Those three things just in and of themselves tell us that we have a lot of opportunity to change what's happening in the classroom environment to help more students meet the expectation. We wanted to show you our 2018-10 Ready results that were just released a week ago, and this represents grades three through five, English Language Arts. And you can see by the first two bar graphs, those are the important initial ones, that in 2018, which is the light blue, and 2017, which is right next to it in the navy, we did have improvement from 2017 to 2018 in reading, again, after we've started our Read to Be Ready work. And maybe more importantly, look across the board, those acronyms, those letters stand for different student groups that are historically underserved in our state: black, Hispanic, Native American, our economically disadvantaged, EL, our English learners, and our students with disabilities. And you can see across the board, we had improvement in this second-year, full-scale work around standards engagement and making changes in our instructional practice in the classroom. So what is our current strategy around third-grade ELA? This is going to be brief, but here they are. We're doing summer camps, K-3 unit starters, we have a coaching network, we're doing literacy learning walks, and new work around Ready with Resources. Summer camps are focused on kids who are farthest behind. It's pretty simple. If you're behind going into first, second, and third grade, you are eligible to be part of a four-week summer camp that's at least four hours a day, most of them are five or six hours a day, where they're engaged in reading and experiences connected to knowledge building. We've had close to 8,000 kids engage the last two summers in our Read to Be Ready summer camps in this partnership with DHS. We have invested in these students who are farthest behind, and last year, we had statistically significant results in year one, and going into this year, we are even including more students who were not able to come last year because we included more money for transportation to make sure all kids could be served. We will have results in September of what our current summer reading camps look like in terms of results. We started providing schools, classrooms with better information. So we now have units that are aligned to our standards that teachers are teaching, and we had over 300 teachers that just won a grant where they're getting now all the books, all the very rigorous texts that go along with these units in our classrooms in the state. We have a coaching network. If you look at this map, you can see where our coaching network exists. We had in the dark color, those were the districts that all started with us, they were sort of our inaugural full participants. Then we have some that are auditing, they're partial participants, but they're working directly with us. And then if they're in white, they're not directly working with us, but ultimately, they're gaining from a lot of the work that we're doing. And this was voluntary, but you can see most of the state is involved. Literacy learning walks are maybe the most important thing we're doing. I always say, this doesn't sound real sexy, but it's really important. This is where we have teams of people from our eight regional core offices that go in, actually look at what's happening in the classroom, and give very concrete feedback on a common rubric, and then follow up with them about how they can make instructional changes. And we have engaged about 700 different classrooms and schools in these learning walks. And then finally, Read to Be Ready is now starting a Ready with Resources component, which is potentially one of the most important things we're doing. This is where we are focused on making sure every classroom has the appropriate materials at the rigor of the expectation, so they're not having to find it on the internet or go to, you know, Teachers Pay Teachers or Pinterest to find ideas that may or may not actually be of high quality. This is about high-quality texts, high-quality assignments, high-quality tasks around reading that every teacher can apply to their students. So I will stop there, there's so much work happening in reading, but I want to say thank you to Mike Kraus and to the entire board for your attention to what we're doing in reading, and certainly the ability to partner with us on this important statewide work that's been invested from the top, from the governor, all the way down to the people on the ground doing it. So, thank you.
Any questions from our board or from THEC about this work before we look at the resolution?
I have a question.
Thank you. You mentioned that 7,700 students went to this 2018 camp from economically disadvantaged and behind. What percent does that represent of all the economically disadvantaged and behind? And what percent does that recommend, does that represent of all students in it? In other words, what fraction are we not reaching right now?
Absolutely. Through the summer camps, it's still just a portion. You can imagine, it's around 15% of the kids that we would say are part of that category of students that could potentially be behind. But remember, not all economically disadvantaged kids are behind.
Right.
But many of them are, and you can see even by our percentages that they tend to be further behind than a student who's not. So we're not reaching everyone through our summer camps, but remember, this is our portion. I'll even look to Nancy Dishner sitting right here beside you. There are other districts, some of our nice longer districts, some of our districts here in middle Tennessee, that do other types of summer camps that have similar messages, similar things that they're doing with them, but they're funding that locally. These are state-funded camps that we're able to do on a large scale that really allows just more students to ultimately be engaged. But we certainly are not attacking all of the problem in every single part of the state.
If we all agree that reading at third grade is the most important thing that a student can be if they're going to be successful, you know, through, then we ought to put everything we can toward that effort.
Agreed.
Any other questions?
I have a question. You also indicated that participation was voluntary, I believe, and the white portions on the map were areas that were not participating, I believe I'm correct, Commissioner?
Yes, this is in the coaching network, where they ultimately have coaches on the ground, and they're part of training that the state is doing.
In the schools.
That's correct.
So what were the reasons that some of the areas indicated they did not choose to participate?
Probably top two reasons. Number one, they already felt like they had a comprehensive literacy plan that they were enacting, and they did not necessarily need additional support, so that would be number one. Data tells if that's accurate or not, and some of them, I would say that was accurate. They were doing something comprehensive that was starting to show growth. The second primary reason is that you had to invest locally in coaches. We were funding a portion of the coach that was on the ground, but they were also having to fund a portion, and that obviously can be a detriment to some of the smaller counties that you see represented here. They just struggled with the funding on the coach side. We helped where we could, but that could not cover all of them based on the state funds we had.
Thank you.
Questions there? Commissioner, I think I'm the last person that actually reads books. What are these kids reading? Are they real books, or are they a combination?
So the books that we're actually giving kids in the Read to Be Ready summer camps or the books associated with the unit starters are great examples of the type of books that kids should be reading in terms of rigor. We want kids to have choice, and they should be reading lots of books, so it's not just one book. I mean, kids should be reading graphic novels, but they should also be reading books that have a lot of substance. So we're trying to model that nonfiction books, books with depth of vocabulary, books that help build knowledge that are associated with science or social studies, should be books that we're using more intentionally in our classroom. An example I give is when I was observing some classrooms before Christmas, and I'll grant it, it was two weeks before Christmas. I was observing, and I went into three classrooms in three different schools, and they were all doing a read aloud with The Grinch. It was the story of The Grinch. Great story, I have nothing against the story of The Grinch, so please don't put me on record as hating The Grinch. I love The Grinch. The problem is that that was in a first-grade classroom, a second-grade classroom, and a third-grade classroom. They were all reading The Grinch. Now, these were in different districts, and my thought was, wow, that was 30 minutes of that child's life, and they already read The Grinch. They already know The Grinch, they already know who he is, the vast majority of kids do. And we were doing the same thing every year during a block of time that could have been more intentional, on building knowledge about the world around them, building knowledge about science, building knowledge about social studies. So what we're trying to model for them is you can connect these disciplines and content that are other, you know, standards with the choices that you're making in reading, and when kids are farthest behind, they need that more. They need that knowledge of rich literature that's connected to science and social studies more so, and sometimes we give them less. And so we're not creating an equitable environment when we're constantly reading low-level materials for every grade level in elementary school, and it's the same old same old year after year. And so we're asking for more intentionality to build students' skills and knowledge base.
To put on my speaker, it's time to take up the joint resolution. I do want to go on record as saying that this is in show of our support, and while it's unusual for it to be joint, it's strictly to show and to prove our support of the third-grade literacy goals. I do want to also remind everyone, at this joint meeting, we are still separate bodies. So I am going to move for adoption of the resolution by the State Board of Education and ask that Nathan James on our staff read the resolution.
A joint resolution of the State Board of Education and the Tennessee Higher Education Commission to renew our collective commitment to the third-grade reading proficiency by Lillian Hargrove, Chair of the State Board of Education, representing the 6th Congressional District. Whereas the Tennessee State Board of Education and Tennessee Higher Education Commission jointly support the goal of the Department of Education to dramatically increase third-grade reading proficiency, and whereas early literacy is the academic cornerstone for all students and lays the foundation for continued success in secondary and post-secondary education and the workforce, and whereas the members of the State Board of Education and the Tennessee Higher Education Commission seek to ensure alignment of student success and support beginning in early grades through post-secondary. Now therefore be it resolved by the Tennessee State Board of Education, the Tennessee Higher Education Commission concurring, that our agencies renew their commitment to utilize available resources to support educators and educator preparation programs as they work to develop teachers and school leaders dedicated to ensuring all students are set on a path to success. Be it further resolved that appropriate copies of this resolution bearing the seals of the bodies and the date of adoption of this resolution be produced with a final clause omitted.
Thank you. For the State Board, I move for adoption on first and final reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Hayden. This will be a voice vote. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed will say nay. The ayes have it, and we adopt.
Thank you. On behalf of the Tennessee Higher Education Commission, I will entertain a motion to approve the joint resolution as presented. Is there a motion?
No move.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor signify so by sending aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. We'll move into the next agenda item, which is teacher preparation update.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and just really quickly, myself and Dr. Morrison will kind of frame up some of the work that's been going on. I think we're going to hear from Commissioner McQueen as well. And ultimately, kind of our shining star today is going to be to hear directly from one of our presidents and chancellors, Chancellor Keith Carver, who apparently got the memo that we don't wear ties at our joint meetings, and I'll just leave it at that. I promised them I wouldn't call them out on that, but the temptation was too strong. It was Mylan Field Day. He's about to get a lot of really good credit and well-deserved credit for all the work UT Martin has done around this subject. One of the things we've observed in higher education is that there's this vicious cycle where higher education will often lament that students are showing up and they're needing remediation and they're not prepared, and then at the same time, you know, often if higher education's ever pointing out, we have a couple fingers pointing back at us in that we are the ones that operate teacher preparation institutions. And so I think Tennessee has had probably at this point a four- or five-year stretch of incredible progress in terms of really taking a hard look at teacher preparation. Very few of those conversations are easy, but I think we're having them right now. And what we really wanted to do is bring together both boards to hear directly about how the work has unfolded, and then again, ultimately, to hear how Chancellor Carver and his team are moving forward in a really dynamic way. You'll take a look at the map. We cover every corner of the state, and certainly would be remiss if your typical center mass picture of teacher preparation is of a public institution. That's certainly true, but the reality is, the majority of our teacher preparation institutions in Tennessee are private institutions. Dr. Pressnell is here as well. And this is a big spread, and a lot of the conversations that is, Dr. Haber and I have been working with these institutions over the last year or so, is that teacher preparation maybe isn't the same in Upper East Tennessee as it is in rural west. That doesn't mean we're not holding teachers to the same standards, but the dynamics of operating a college of education are fundamentally different according to which university or college you're at. We obviously started the conversation, though, I think with an acknowledgement there was some work to do, and if you look at these performance categories, there's a lot of work to do. I think that what we're really heartened about, though, is, I can tell you right now that the majority of our public institution presidents are well-aware of where their institution falls within the spectrum now, which in and of itself is powerful, and then we also convened essentially every Takua institution about two months ago and spoke to all of their presidents and dean as well. And in some ways, awareness is the first step. We heard from a lot of the presidents, remember, if you're a college president, you have eight colleges. So maybe knowing the granular detail of how a college of education is performing, maybe you didn't know that before. Many of them do now. The other thing is, the State Board has done such a good job in bringing forth an actionable tool, and a college dean can sit down with this report card and really see in granular detail, this is how we can improve as an institution. I would just close before I defer to Sarah in saying, about two years ago, we started with this idea of maybe we just need to sit down with presidents, and that really led to all of these series of conversations we've had. I think the best way, Dr. Morrison refers to them as consultancies, and I think that's accurate. We try to sit down, and as you saw from the performance levels, often it's a shock when they first see how they're doing, but we try to sit down and work through each stratification of data to help them understand the way forward. And as you'll hear from Chancellor Carver, there really is a way forward. It isn't looking at data and feeling like that's the way it will always be. There really is a path for our teacher preparation institutions to increase ultimately the quality of output of their teachers, but at the same time, in a virtuous cycle, increase the preparedness of their incoming freshmen.
Great, thank you, Mike. This is one of my favorite things to talk about, and I'm really excited to have both of our boards together to talk about teacher preparation. As Mike said, this is really important joint work that the State Board, THEC, and the Department of Education has been engaged in, and it's just fantastic to have such partners like Mike and Candace to do this work with. I think we've seen a lot of really productive meetings and outcomes the last couple of years, and it is such a shared responsibility. So I want to talk through, as he mentioned, one of the kind of key roles that the State Board plays with respect to teacher preparation, in addition to approving programs for licensure. So anyone that wants to train teachers for the purpose of licensure in Tennessee has to be approved by the State Board. And Candace will talk a little bit more about some of the annual reports and how that data drives the approval and the accountability of programs. We've also, by statute, for the last number of years, produced what we call the Teacher Prep Report Card. And I want to talk through a little bit about this because I think, as Mike said, it's become a key tool for programs, for districts, for other stakeholders who are interested in teacher preparation, to better understand the landscape of the programs across our state that are doing this critical work of preparing teachers. So you don't need to read this, but suffice to say, this is rooted in legislation, the charge to create a report card. The highlighted text there at the beginning really tells you what you need to know in terms of the State Board being charged with, in assistance by the Department and THEC, developing a report card or an assessment on the effectiveness of teacher training programs. And there's a number of things that have to be included, and then there's a lot of leeway for our state agencies to think collectively over time about what data can inform these report card, annual reports that we produce. Just a very brief kind of timeline in terms of this work. The legislation that you just saw was passed in 2007. The first version of the Teacher Prep Report Card was then produced the following year in 2008, and at the time, it was produced by THEC. That was in part a capacity decision, and certainly, THEC has a lot of knowledge and data to pull into this work as well. Mike and I talked in 2015, that transitioned back to the State Board for a number of reasons, given our role in approving these programs and additional capacity that we were able to secure, we made that transition back to the State Board in 2015. As part of doing that, we engaged in a pretty extensive redesign process of the report card. We had been hearing from stakeholders in districts and prospective candidates, all of whom are target audiences for the report card, that they really wanted something that they could use to drive some of the decisions that they were making about where to go in the case of the candidate to be trained and put their money and time, in the case of districts, who they were hiring from in terms of programs. So that was a big year in 2016 in terms of the redesign. I'll talk more about that in just a minute. Since then, we've been continuing to collect feedback to improve the report card each year. We issued it again in 2017 and are in the process of making changes for 2018. The way the report card timeline works, based on the way the data comes back in Tennessee, the 2018 report card, sorry, 2017 report card is actually produced in 2018, so there's a little bit of a lag in terms of when the report is produced each year. A couple of things to note, again, ahead of Candace's talk about sort of the annual reports, is that as a state, and I can say this because I talk with a lot of colleagues in other states, we're really fortunate to have so much rich data on the effectiveness of our teachers in the classroom, and that allows us to do a number of things when it comes to sharing that data back with our programs who are training teachers for the classroom. It's meant that when we redesigned the report card, we could really kind of decouple what had been a single report that was intended to serve all audiences to essentially what are two different reports produced each year, but based on a lot of the same data. The first is the report card, and I'll talk about that in a minute. It's sort of the public-facing, high-level report designed for external reading and stakeholder use. It's one that we produce at the State Board in coordination and in conjunction with the It's one that we produce at the State Board in coordination and in conjunction with the Department and THEC. And then separately, we have what we call the annual reports that Candace will talk about briefly in just a minute. And those are more designed to drive improvements at the program level. So there's a lot more data, a lot more granularity in terms of the kind of information that we can share back with our programs to really help them think about where they're challenged, where they need to focus their energy, where they're seeing real success across their teacher training programs. So again, this was exciting to be able to kind of decouple and produce two different reports for essentially two different purposes. So when we engaged in that redesign process in 2016, a couple of quick goals to run through, again, very user-friendly. We wanted to make sure that this is data that could be actionable and used by a variety of stakeholders, well-organized and clear. That meant it had to be focused. We couldn't put everything that we collect as a state on the report card. Because again, we wanted it to be informative. We wanted it to really be driving strategic decisions at the local level and make that really actionable. And then finally, we wanted to make sure it was accessible to additional audiences behind, besides our programs. So really thinking about school districts, prospective candidates, as well as our EPPs, our educator prep programs. I think I see Spencer Glasdick waiting in the wings. I'm going to tag out to him at this point. He has been the primary author of our report card at the State Board, and we're sad to be losing him to grad school here in a couple of weeks, but wanted him to have a chance to show you a little bit about the report card and talk through the performance framework.
Thanks, Sarah.
So yeah, as a big part of the redesign in 2016, we did create an interactive website with the vendor Tembo, and we really felt that that was a great way for us to make sure that all of this information that we were sharing about our EPPs was accessible and was user-friendly in a way that our previous reports hadn't been able to be. So we're really proud of that work. I believe we're going to try to show the website here.
If you can pull it up. If it doesn't work, then we'll keep going, but I'd love for you all to see it if it will cooperate.
All right, it works.
Great.
So here's our main landing page for the report card, and this is basically where you come when you click the link to the Teacher Preparation Report Card. As you can see here, we have all of the state's educator preparation providers listed on the side there. And then in addition to that information, we have the size of each EPP, their overall performance category, which we have on a scale of one, two, three, or four, with four being the highest. We have the candidate profile domain, employment domain, and provider impact domain. And all of this information is sortable, so if you want to see overall, all which EPPs are performing the highest, you can see there. And then if you're more interested in a particular domain, so which EPPs have the best track record of employing and retaining teachers in Tennessee, you can look at that as well. And then over to the side here, you can download each individual report. We also have available on this main page a state report that looks at some of the higher level state data, as well as detailing the performance of each of the EPPs. And then we also have state data accessible for download for people who are interested in looking at by the numbers how our providers fared on each of the metrics of the report card, as well as some of the disaggregations that we've included in the 2018 version. So I'll just very briefly click through one example to show you what it looks like when you go to the page of an individual provider. So here we have our profile page. So you can see a little bit about the provider, their website, their leadership. Then we have this map here that shows the placement of candidates across the state from each EPP. And if you click through to there, it'll actually take you to the State Board website, and you'll get a detailed table where you can see the exact counts for each of the districts across the state. We have a brief description that was provided from the EPP, and then some demographic and other characteristics about the programs that they offer. So what type of licensure they offer, clinical practice opportunities, how their candidates are admitted, what standardized tests they're taking, and then performance on the Praxis Principles of Learning and Teaching Assessment, which is one of the things that's in that statute there that Sarah read through earlier. Then we also last year added a highlights module. There we go. So that includes two sections. One is the EPP highlights. So we solicited self-reported information from all of our EPPs where they could talk about either a particular program or facet of their institution that they wanted to highlight, or they could go into more detail about their overall mission and the good work that they're doing in that sense. And then we also have a state focus section. Last year, it was on partnerships. So we know that that's been a real theme across the state, is the partnerships between our preparation providers and our school districts. So we wanted to give our EPPs a chance to write a little bit about the work that they've been doing in that area and some of the gains that they've been able to make through those relationships. And so that then takes us to the main scored portion of the report card. You can see here that it details overall performance at the top here, the percentage of points earned, as well as the information at the domain level, how they performed on each of the three domains that we have. And down here, you can see a comparison between the 2016-17 report card and the 2015-16 report card. And then within each of the domains, you can also see a performance both overall for that domain, change over time there. And then on each metric, you can see performance as well. And I'll go through exactly how to read that in a second in case you have interest in checking out this report further in your own time. So this is the main performance framework that we've used for the report card for the last couple of years. We decided when we were producing the 2017 report card, that was produced last February, to keep this the same as it was for the 2016 version, just so our providers would be working towards the same targets there, and it wouldn't feel like we had a shifting goal in mind. But they knew really what we were looking for in order for us to really feel like we're there being successful. So the three domains, as I mentioned before, are the candidate profile domain, which includes information on the percentage of completers with an ACT score of 21 or higher, or an equivalent SAT score, sort of getting at the selectivity of the programs there. We also look at the percentage of racially and ethnically diverse completers because that's something that we at the State Board value pretty highly, and there's a significant mismatch between the demographics of our students here in Tennessee and our teachers. And so that's something that we wanted to value as well. And then we also look at the percentage of high-demand endorsements each EPP is issuing. So those are the areas where statewide, we're really seeing significant shortages. So those are areas like secondary math, secondary science, so biology, chemistry, or physics, Spanish, special education, or English as a second language. And those are areas where we're looking at overall, out of all the endorsements a provider is issuing, what percentage are in those shortage areas. The next domain that we have is employment, and that's specifically looking at Tennessee public schools. So the first thing we look at there is your first-year placement rate. So after you complete your program, within a year, are you employed in a Tennessee public school? And then of those completers who are employed in their first year, we also look at retention. So beyond that first year, are you remaining in not necessarily the same Tennessee public school, but a Tennessee public school classroom? And then finally, our focus with the redesigned report card was really to shift more to looking at outcomes of our providers rather than necessarily telling them what specific inputs or ways they needed to structure their program were important. So this is where we put most of our emphasis. Forty out of the 75 points on the current performance framework are in this domain. And so we look at for both observation scores and T-VAS scores, the percentage that are receiving at least a score of three in the classroom, so meeting our expectations there, as well as the percentage that are getting a four or a five. So those who are really going above and beyond in their performance in the classroom and the growth that they're able to see in their students. And then finally, as I mentioned, just our way of looking at each particular metric there, we basically have three ranges that you can see in the graphic there. The one labeled one is below what we consider our minimum standard. So these were also the same from 2016 to 2017, but in 2016, we set these at the 10th and 90th percentile of EPP performance. So in that first range there, that's below the 10th percentile from our initial distribution, you would receive no points on that metric. If you are above the second number that you see there, the 96.3, that's what we call our target, and that was at the 90th percentile, you'll get full points on that metric. And then anything in the range between there, the one shaded blue and labeled two on the graphic, you'll receive partial points based off of where you are in that scored range. So that's really to make sure that we're seeing within the distribution of our EPPs who's really going above and beyond. But we wanted to make sure that we were giving a lot of partial credit because we wanted to encourage our EPPs to show some improvement. And so by keeping those levels set at the same places in 2018, 2017, excuse me, as 2016, we were able to see every piece of growth on a metric would result in additional points for that EPP. So this is the distribution of the performance. I think Mike showed a version of this earlier, but we do see a little bit of a shift of the distribution to the right from 2016 to 2017. We had fewer EPPs scoring in the lowest performance category and more scoring in the second and the third. I believe we had eight EPPs who improved a performance category from one year to the next. And so we're really encouraged by that. And I think that as we move forward with the report card, we'll hope to see people continuing to move towards the right on this distribution here.
Great. Thanks, Spencer. I'll wrap this up here, and then I'm going to turn it over to Candace to talk about the annual reports. But just a reminder again, this is the public-facing report, so it really is not an accountability tool, but it is hopefully a way that stakeholders of all different backgrounds, like I said, districts, prospective candidates, can have a sense of their options across the state, whether it's about hiring or where to invest their time and energy in terms of training. To kind of guide our redesign process and the revisions each year, we have what we call an advisory council on the Teacher Prep Report Card, which has just begun meeting for this year. Bob Eby on the State Board, Bob, is our State Board member, but we have a lot of EPP educator prep provider stakeholders as part of that. Donna Neblet from UT Martin is one of our stars this year. But it's really a great way to get input both from our districts and from our EPPs about sort of how we can design this in a way that's ultimately most useful for the field. This year, one thing we're excited about is adding a leader preparation module. We know how important school leadership is when it comes to driving student outcomes, and so we think, again, as we're able, it's important as a state to report information about leader preparation as well as teacher preparation. And there's a few other changes that we'll be making this year, each year, based on the advisory council's input. There's going to be some tweaks. We expect for the 1920, after we complete three cohorts of data, that we'll be doing a little bit more of a major step back to make some changes to the performance framework and some other things at that time. But in any case, any quick questions on this before I hand over to Candace? Yes?
Thank you, Sarah. The information you gleaned from the report card, if I understand correctly, you send that out to the EPPs and they do with it what they know they need to do based upon their score, correct?
So it's a great question, and I think after you hear from Candace, you'll see they, our programs, and you'll hear from Dr. Carver, certainly use this information because it's a marketing tool. It's something that they're often wanting to respond to in their communities and to share with their partners. But the annual reports is really what they use to drive the program improvements because it's much more detailed. We make sure to work closely with the department so that we have shared data definitions and sort of are sending programs in the same direction essentially between the two reports. But the annual reports are really what programs are using to drive their sort of programmatic improvements.
And do you all use this report primarily centrally then to understand what's happening across the state?
At a high level.
It's more your internal, okay.
It's really a public-facing kind of external report to help, you know, stakeholders understand at a high level what's happening with teacher preparation. And then through the annual reports, that informs the board's approval decision. So every seven years, any program that's approved for training teachers for licensure comes up before the board for reapproval. What Candace will talk about in a minute is really the data that's driving those approval and kind of accountability decisions.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Yep. Great question.
Okay. Give me. Actually pass it down there. Y'all come on up.
Do you want this? Who wants the clicker?
Yeah, let me introduce it, and then we'll have Michael and Annie actually talk to you about this work. I really appreciate the comment earlier because it's a good segue into the differences between the report card and the annual report. So think of the report card as sort of the consumer reports, you know, documents that public-facing, it gives high level, same data that we use in the annual report, but the annual report data is much richer. There's more data there. It's, you have the ability to disaggregate it. Think about, you're a college dean, and you're like, oh, this looks great, ma. Social studies teachers are doing well, but you really want to dig into by what program that they come out, are they doing better or worse? Is it at the graduate level? Is it undergraduate level? What licensure area may be pushing better quality in terms of, is it 712? Is it your 3A? Like what's actually driving the strengths and weaknesses that you have and be able to disaggregate it? So what we're going to share today is a bit of the work we're doing on literacy in our earlier conversation and how we're driving that through educator preparation, because we know that has been a lot of the work that the State Board has wanted us to drive, as well as the review process through the annual reports that connect to this public-facing document. So I have Michael Durle, he's our executive director now of the Office of Ed Prep and Licensure. He took Amy Wooton's place, who has just left us. She is now working as a senior policy director for Deans for Impact, which is a national organization. So wanted you to know, Michael is now in that role, and we're thrilled that he will be presenting to you today. And then Annie Insana is with us. She's the director of literacy for our ed prep and induction work, and so she'll take a few slides to talk about our literacy work. So Michael, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and am I on?
Not yet. Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Board, for having us. As Commissioner noted, my name is Michael Durle. I'm the executive director of the Office of Educator, Licensure, and Preparation. I'm glad I wore a tie today. I'm going to turn it over to Annie. We, in 2017, the Board adopted literacy standards in a number of different endorsement areas that did not previously have those standards. Annie has really led this work, and it is grueling work to really dig into EPP content and develop a review process as it relates to these really rigorous literacy standards. So I'm going to turn it over to Annie to go through that process.
Thanks, Michael. Am I on?
One more to the right. Not turning on. Let's try this.
So as Michael mentioned, this work really started in April of 2017 with the State Board approval of the Early Elementary and Special Education EPP literacy standards. And this is an area that we focused on first in terms of understanding the support that ed prep needs in order to not only understand these standards, but really the state's approach of teaching literacy in Tennessee. And so one of the first things that we did was host a series of convenings, or regional convenings, to engage all of our EPPs to understand what this work entails. And one of the, the next steps that we did was design a very rigorous literacy proposal review process that not only required the EPPs to think about the EPP literacy standards within their programs, but also how they were going to align their literacy preparation with the instructional shifts that are articulated within the teaching literacy in Tennessee approach. So this is really a review of our timeline as we developed this literacy review process that, again, was much more substantive. In the past, what we've asked EPPs to do is to create a matrix and outline the standards and list the courses in which those standards will be covered and to provide a little bit more of a narrative. Now we really ask for specific examples of candidate assessments, which ask candidates, ed prep folks, to be thinking about what candidates will be doing in preparation, to think about how they're going to be understanding what complex texts are, how they will be pairing them with instructional strategies, how they will support students in developing and thinking about daily and end-of-unit tasks. So these proposals were due in, this process was also designed to be very iterative. So once the proposals were due, they had an opportunity to be reviewed by LEA and EPP-trained reviewers. And if they didn't meet expectations, then they were provided feedback and then sent back to the EPPs, and were actually given the opportunity to do this multiple times. The first date was April 15th, in that the Early Elementary and Special Education proposals were due. And during that time, they had until about May 30th, the reviewers to review those proposals and to provide that feedback. And if they did not meet expectations, then they submitted their revisions at the end of the month on June, and then just again received notification whether or not they met, if they were approved or needed revisions just this last Friday. And what I can show you here is an outcome of that review process. The EPPs are approved by a program, at the program level, and so they would list each endorsement, like in early childhood, pre-K3, and then the level, either undergraduate or graduate, and then have the particular clinical practice designation as well, either an internship or job embedded or student teaching. So they were approved at the level of the program. And so with Early Elementary and Special Education across all of our EPPs, we're really talking about approximately 375 programs overall. EPPs were, provided the opportunity to streamline those programs onto a single proposal or to submit multiple proposals depending on the literacy preparation that fit their EPP needs. And so the slide up here shows that at round one, on April 15th, after that first round, we had 34 proposals, which represented 15 EPPs that met expectations on the first round, and 78 proposals that required revisions. During this last revision window, we had 65 proposals meet expectations with only 20 During this last revision window, we had 65 proposals meet expectations with only 20 remaining that require revisions, and we're in that last window now for that iterative review. We are also looking forward to, and have started the first steps to develop the proposal process for the middle, secondary and instructional leader programs as well. The endorsements that are included in this round include the LA middle and secondary programs, instructional leader, the non-ELA middle and secondary, like our math and our science and our social studies, career and technical education and our pre-K12 programs. This is exciting because not all of these programs have even been aligned to literacy standards in the past, and so we're excited to start that work with this next round. And in terms of a timeline, we're providing a lot of support for EPPs through our literacy network, which was just launched at the beginning of this calendar year and has now met three times. We are, have invited between one to two faculty members from each EPP to engage with this literacy network work, where we've invited them to provide feedback on the literacy proposal requirements and to engage with peer collaboration to begin that drafting process and to think about what substantive changes they need to make in their programs. These proposals will be due for ELA middle and secondary and instructional leaders the beginning of the calendar year with the non-ELA middle, secondary, CTE and pre-K12 programs shortly after. And they will also engage in an iterative review cycle with the expectation that EPP literacy standards will be implemented in fall of 2019. Turn it back over to Michael.
Great, we're happy to take any questions on the literacy proposal review process.
I do want to note that the work that we're doing, particularly with the networks that all faculty who teach reading courses are now part of, as well as the implementation that's fairly rigorous, is modeled after a few states who actually are surpassing us in reading expectations across the board and have just quite frankly done better than we have in preparing teachers. And one of those states is Kentucky. Kentucky's had these faculty networks around preparing teachers with EPP faculty for years, and they are a state similar in demographics that have been top in the nation in NAEP in terms of growth in literacy, where we have not seen that same level in the, you know, they're in the top 25 and we are not. And we feel like it's an area that we can improve on dramatically with years of sustained practice around EPP work and literacy. So we're at the beginning of that work, but appreciate really all of our higher education community for being so receptive and being a partner in the changes.
Okay. We'd like to provide some updates and context for the work around annual reports. A number of things about annual reports have already been mentioned, just for a high-level overview, they are required by the EPP policies. So at the end of 2014, the Board adopted a policy that really recognized that that seven-year cycle was too long, that educator preparation providers being reviewed every seven years was not enough, and that we had to have some kind of interim process for reviews. So in that policy, we've outlined a number of metrics that would be part of an annual report, and you'll notice some consistency with the report card. So we look at recruitment and selection, placement and retention, candidate assessment, partner and completer satisfaction data, and then all the way through impact. So we're looking at things like ACT, SAT, Praxis Core Performance, recruitment of individuals from underrepresented racial groups, males, high needs endorsement areas, GPA. So it's very similar to the report card, but a very much an internal facing tool. Through the annual reports, we're really producing two separate tools. The first, we're calling the insights tool, and that tool is really geared for the provider to better understand what is driving their overall performance. As the Commissioner noted, we wanted to look deeply at endorsement areas, clinical types, program types, like undergraduate and graduate. And so this tool really allows the provider to dig deep into their own data and answer some questions they may have about their outcomes. So we really had the goal of allowing that user to investigate and interact with multiple metrics across multiple years. They can look at single year, they can look at three-year aggregate data, provide actionable data that they can use in faculty meetings and sit down and really investigate what might be driving their outcomes. And then again, allow for disaggregation by program design characteristics. And then there obviously is the function of program approval. So the department is responsible for implementing the EPP policy and carrying that out and ensuring that we have a process for reviewing programs and providers, and then making recommendations to the state board. So we've developed the performance report, which really takes a key set of metrics and attaches thresholds to those metrics, so minimum thresholds for expectations. We really used a group called the Educator Preparation Working Group to develop those thresholds and metrics, which is comprised of EPP and school district representatives. And the goals of that were really, again, to highlight key metrics and then apply specific thresholds. So this is just a screenshot of what that performance report looks like at a high level. Overall, you can see on the top left, this provider meets expectations, and then each domain is highlighted below. I didn't bring screenshots with details, but you can actually click into each one of these and see performance across all the metrics that are included and across the So overall, on the 2017 performance report, EPPs must have met at least three out of the four rated domains, and then they must meet domain five. Another goal of the revised review process was really to shift from an inputs-driven process to an outcomes-focused process, and domain five is really what gets at that impact in outcomes. EPPs that fall below expectations on both the 2017 and 2018 performance reports, which will be released next February, will have to engage in an interim review process, which is a new process as part of the approval cycle. And in 2017, the following six providers did not meet expectations on the performance report. So these providers have been notified that they didn't meet expectations, they're able to see in the performance report exactly what kind of put them in a position to not meet expectations, and then the idea is that they can dig into their insights tool and start to think about potential changes they can make to their program to improve. Spencer kind of went through some timelines related to the report cards. I will say that this year in particular, and last year as well, we've really sought to align our processes and make sure that we are using the same data sources, communications with EPPs have been streamlined, and so our timeline looks fairly similar. Data collected from EPPs that just took place last month. The EPP file will be finalized in September. One particular area of interest for us that we're in development of is the partner and completer satisfaction surveys. And then we also want to start to develop annual reports for instructional leader preparation, that's a big part of the revisions to the educator preparation policy. We convened a working group last summer that started to outline the metrics that would be part of that report. And then the new, the 2018 annual reports will be produced in February 2019. Happy to take any questions on the annual reports. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Ready for the next agenda item? Tennessee dual enrollment study? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, thank you.
I think this will bring it home, Madam Chairman. Chancellor Carver was the first institution we met with to kind of walk through this. He has kind of been the model now for the rest of the state in terms of how to take this data back to your campus and be able to really get it down into the marrow of your operations. I have no problem predicting UT Martin's performance will dramatically improve largely because of how I think Chancellor Carver and his team have embedded both the annual report and the report card into their daily work. And if you look at rural West Tennessee, UT Martin's educator preparation program is crucial. It is essentially all of rural West Tennessee's provider base. So I'm very grateful to Chancellor Carver for taking the time to come over and just share how this data has been able to be integrated into his campus.
Absolutely. Thank you for the invitation. And Commissioner McQueen, it's the first time I've ever been called a model, so I am grateful. I'm grateful for that. Want to do just really three quick things. First of all, just tell you about coming into this role and having the reality check of where we, where we were and are, then give you a little update on where we're headed, and then finally close with how we're working with the state board and with THEC and with our own faculty team to really move forward, and I'm excited about the future. I started in this job at UT Martin in January of 2017, and Sarah, I think that was just weeks after the release of the first revamped report card. And coming in, UT Martin was in tier two. We were in category two. Lots of reasons for that, but obviously as we looked around and looked at ourselves as a campus Hayden, that's an area we didn't want to be in, but at first we needed to find out why we were there. And one of the great things that I think that happened in that first quarter on the job is THEC and the state board offered to just open up the books and allowed me to bring my team to Nashville. And so for the first time in a long time at Martin, we had the people in the trenches at UT Martin, our dean, our department chair, our faculty, working with these great stakeholders at the state. And I just, if I could describe one word, talk about that meeting, it really demystified the annual report and the report card for our team. And they saw for the first time ways that we could work and move the needle on things and change the way we were doing things to help improve for the future. And so I think in that regard, really saw the state as a partner, and it was a really good moment for our team at Martin. Just quickly, so our EPP program just earned full approval from CAEP, and that's the Council for Accreditation for Educational Preparation Program. So obviously, that was big for us to come through that with a ringing endorsement with no recommendations for further work. And that just happened this spring and was a big, big step forward and big boost for us. In terms of literacy reports, we completed and have successful reports for K5, special ed and job embedded programs, and that's extremely critical for us. In terms of how many and the number we're putting out, and we'll show you a map in a second of where they're going, had 135 new teachers coming out of that program in fall of 2017 and this past spring in 2018. And in terms of retention rate, 95.2% of those graduates over the last two years, as we've tracked it, they are staying in the field for three years. And so that's really good for us. We feel like the overwhelming majority of our graduates are going into the schools and they're staying, and those first three years are critical. If you can get them to stay and feel comfortable and competent in what they're doing, they're going to be successful. Obviously, 99.6% of our undergraduates had the 275 or higher and 100% pass rate on the content exams for the Praxis. When you look at where our students are going, really they're going from the river to the river. If you look at the Tennessee River and you look at the Mississippi River, that's where our Martin grads are growing. High, high intensity of folks going into the rural areas, underserved areas, and that's who we are as an institution, and those are the students that by majority that we are attracting, and they're going back into their home communities, and we're really excited about, excited about the future. The teacher placement program has hired a new observation specialist that is going into the schools and is working with our student teachers and working with principals and guidance counselor. She's real attractive, her name is Holly Ann Carver, happens to be my wife, but so, so at work, while we're looking at the hard facts and doing some studies, at night, I've got someone who is in the trenches and really working with our local schools and principals and our students to see how things are going. So I'm also hearing the anecdotal evidence of some of the changes we're making, and she really is cute, so.
I was really worried about where you were going there. Really worried.
Commissioner, she would not say I'm a model either, so anyway. Talk about where we are. We talked about we're in performance category two, and what are our takeaways from that? Well, if you were to pull up our report card, two of the things that would really jump out with you is the diversity of our cohorts. We've got to do better in terms of who is coming to Martin and who is getting in the ed prep program and the demographics of that. Also, our T-Bos, our observation scores, and so we're breaking that open and we're able to do that and work with the state on where we can, where we can move. Three things that we're currently doing that I am so excited that I think we're going to see some real results in that next three-year cycle as we look at data, is we're the only Tennessee provider that is working with this national program called Call Me Mister. And it's a national program, and it's where you take African-American men and bring them into the program and put them through the ed prep program, but also provide a lot of special skills training, leadership development, mentoring, and this fall, we have five Call Me Mister candidates coming in, our very first cohort. What they'll do upon graduation is they'll go back into underserved areas and agree to stay there and teach for a good while. And this is our first iteration, we're really excited about these five young men that are coming in, four Tennesseans and one from Kentucky. They're coming over to my house in about three weeks for dinner, and we're going to make sure this cohort gets started off right and we recruit another cohort and then another, and really build off that. We're also in a partnership right now with the State Department where we're piloting a new clinical mentor program, and that's brand new, we're going to see, we're going to see where that goes. But also, we're also piloting a new program, we're going to provide our graduates professional development support for their first two years of employment. So they're out in the field, they feel like maybe they, they're deficient in competency, they can come back at no cost and they can work with our faculty. We're real excited about the future, we are so grateful to be able to have a presence at the table at the state board meetings when we talk about these things, and I think our future's bright. I'm an optimist, and our team is very optimistic, and we're going to keep grinding. So thank you so much, would be happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Wendy.
Thank you for the work you're doing. And we were at UT Martin, was it last year?
I think it was two.
Two years ago. Beautiful, beautiful place, beautiful drive, so thank you. I, you got my ear when you mentioned the clinical mentor program, so I would love to hear a little bit about what that will look like. Yeah.
So within, within those clinical placements, they'll actually be assigned a graduate mentor to work with them as they're undergraduates, as they're going through the program, they'll have an assigned mentor. So one-on-one as far as they're concerned, but the mentors may have several folks they're working with.
That's great. Bobby Eby?
Thank you. You have a couple of questions. The Call Me Mister program, are those students on scholarship?
They are, they are.
Excellent. How successful are you in getting students in the endorsement areas into the tough areas? And what do you do for that?
It's tough in terms of high level, and what we've had to do is, I think EPP and the situation we have from the report card has caused us to take our teacher placement program and really integrate it across the university. And so when we talk about enrollment strategy and our admissions team and our career in advising and our counselors working with students, we've had to identify those areas where we have deficiencies. Right now, we could probably send 75 people with math certification out and get jobs immediately. So when our admissions counselors are out and they're working in the high schools and someone they talks about having an interest in math, I mean, that automatically triggers something, foreign languages, the natural sciences, and even, I think it's from an admissions standpoint, but then once they get on campus and they're in advising and they're working with faculty in those advising situations, trying to steer those students that have an interest in those areas that might still be undecided, to really get them connected with people to talk about career path, especially in these high need endorsement areas. So it's a university-wide effort now, and at Martin, we're small enough where we can do things like that and talk to each other. And so that's just to walk down a hallway to get an advisee with a faculty member in education, so we're real excited about it. And it's, it's created awareness that we all need to work together to improve.
And one other question. You said that 92.5% of your completers are in the field up to three years. I do sit on the advisory council for the state board, and I met with the dean of Lee University Education and the dean of UT Chattanooga actually yesterday, and one of the challenges they have is they And one of the challenges they have is they, they lose completers to Georgia. Are you having similar problems with Kentucky or Missouri?
We do. You know, when you look at Martin, we're six miles from Kentucky. And about, you know, less than an hour from Arkansas, Missouri, even getting into Illinois. So, you do see that, especially as other states adjust pay scales or opportunities. One of the things, our enrollment strategy right now, our demographic for college, for the college-going, a traditional college-going student in rural West Tennessee is decreasing. So, we are recruiting more heavily in those states, and what happens oftentimes is some of those students want to go back home. I'm not sure why, once they've been to the land of milk and honey, but there are some that do go, want to go back home. And so, some of that's natural.
Are you able to, are you able to track those students for up to the three-year time period?
We, well, we do, but it's, but it's from, from our Department of Ed Studies that that's done.
Thank you. Excellent. Very good.
Oh, you bet. Thank you. Many apologies for not marrying Todd today, but there's a long story behind that, but we'll get on with the agenda if there are no more questions.
I know that Hayden Baucham, who is going to be going to UT Martin, has something that he wants to say, and then I want to come back and make a comment.
Yeah, I just, for real quick, I just want to sing the praises of Chancellor Carver. I remember the, he said he started in January of 2017. I think it was a week after he started. He was at our high school, which nobody here, I could tell you exactly how to get there and everything, nobody would know where it is. And that's what made it so, like, impressive to all of us that the chancellor of Martin come to talk to the kids at Riverside, because he was trying to, you know, we do a lot of dual enrollment stuff, and he was talking us up. And he was talking about the recruitment that they do. I've had faculty members from Martin trying to recruit me for the last five years. So, they take recruitment very seriously, and Chancellor Carver is going to put Martin in a good spot. And when you give him this much data to work with, Martin will probably be like the top program in a year, maybe two, and that's if he, that's if he takes his time. But go Skyhawks.
Hayden, thank, thank you, Hayden.
No, no pressure.
No, none at all.
But it is truly exciting to hear what you are doing since you've been there. And I'm just curious to know, do you all take opportunities when you meet among your peers to share best practices and learn from each other, especially because you've done this great job of really digging into the reports and getting your arms around what you needed to do, I like to say, more, better, different, less?
Sure. I, I think one of the great things, I think the State's Board is providing that opportunity for us, convening, getting some groups together. As different institutions have gone through and done these one-on-one meetings with this group, I think in the, in the aftermath of some of that, we're, we're doing some talking. The UT schools have, have had conversations, especially Chattanooga and Martin, on how we could, we could move the needle, but would love to have some statewide conversations. And I know Dr. Nolan and is, is here, and Phil Oldham is here, and they would want the same thing. So, I think anytime we can have a convening to get together to talk about how we can do better. They both have on ties today, I would like to point out.
Dr. Oldham left the room. Thank you for that.
I think you can see why we had asked Chancellor Carver to share kind of the UT Martin story, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Happy to do it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Now, are we ready for Dr. Emily House? Tennessee Dual Enrollment.
And just to introduce Dr. House, Madam Chairman, as you all know, the Ready Graduate Indicator that all of our LEAs are now seeking to meet will require one of the potential criterias to have at least four EPSOs. We believe and we know that in many of our rural areas, dual enrollment is probably the primary vehicle to accomplish that. Dr. House and her team have launched, in conjunction with the Department of Education, probably the first-ever comprehensive plan for dual enrollment. So, just to be clear, heretofore, dual enrollment was offered based on which school counselor talked to which college, which is not a strategic plan at all. And we are now moving forward into a territory where between the Department of Education, the State Board, and THEC and the colleges, we will have a umbrella approach to ensure that every student, and let's be clear, some counties have no dual enrollment. Every student will have access to some dual enrollment. So, without further ado, Dr. House.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Madam Chair. Chairman Copan, members, in the interest of time, I will be quite brief. But just to begin to zoom back a little bit, to zoom out, we have been talking so much in partnership with the Board and in partnership with the Department about EPSOs, early post-secondary opportunities for students in high school. And that conversation spans the gamut from AP, international baccalaureate, dual credit, dual enrollment. There are many, many ways to conceptualize and group EPSOs together. So, I do want to focus only on dual enrollment today, serving as one of those, one piece of the big EPO pie. So, just for clarity, dual enrollment is a course offered to high school students that is a post-secondary course. The student is actually enrolled as a student at the post-secondary institution offering the course, even though the course may be held in the high school or online or on the post-secondary campus. So, that's just an important note from, I'll put my data hat on for a second, from the data perspective, we have a record in our data system, the post-secondary data system, for these students as having enrolled in the post-secondary institution. So, while Commissioner McQueen's data team has a record for the student as well, we have one too, just to be very clear about that. Approximately 18,000 students take dual, took dual enrollment in fall 2016. Almost 40,000 students take dual enrollment each year, but some of those students are duplicated, in that they take more than one course per semester, although they take one in the fall, one in the spring. So, the, the most unduplicated way to look at this is about 18,000 in the fall of two academic years ago. Dual enrollment is growing substantially. This is an annual number here, not just a fall number, but it has grown in all sectors offering dual enrollment substantially and significantly over the past few years. So, those offered, courses offered by TCATs, by community colleges, by both public and private four-year universities have grown profoundly over, over time. So, it's a piece of the pie when we talk about EPSOs. It's a growing piece of the pie. But what I'd like to talk a little bit about is who is taking dual enrollment and who is not, before I move into talking about what the next steps are with regard to the strategic plan that Mike mentioned. And again, I will try to be very brief. So, as you can see here, the students who take dual enrollment are disproportionately female, they are not students of color, they are not low-income students, they are relatively high-achieving. These two metrics here are averages. The mean ACT score is a 24, and the mean high school GPA is a 3.5 for these students. They are not first-generation students, and they indicate on the ACT questionnaire that they aspire to attend a university, rather than a community college or a technical college. So, this is the profile of the student on average, the profile of the student who is taking dual enrollment currently in our state. So, to sort of spoil my own next few slides, there are many opportunities here with an equity lens and with an access lens with regard to offering dual enrollment and EPSOs more broadly, but again, I'm focusing only on dual enrollment, dual enrollment courses to students who do not currently take them up. This is easier to see than I thought, so that's very exciting. This map reflects, this, this map reflects the providers of dual enrollment courses across the state. Each shape reflects a system. So, the circles are community colleges, the asterisks, the stars are locally governed institutions, and the triangle on the west side of the state is Dr. Carver's own UT Martin. So, you can see, to Mike's point a second ago, this is a pretty robust map. And I won't spend a whole lot of time talking about who is who and who's serving where and things like that. I'm happy to do that offline and tell you what color is what institution. But the point of this is that while dual enrollment is pretty saturated in many parts of the state, there are counties on this map where there are no markings at all. So, while I just mentioned a second ago, the need for equity and access for different student populations, we can also have that same conversation with regard to geography as well. And I, I don't know if Dr. Presnell is still behind me, Dr. Presnell's schools are not reflected on this map, just to be clear about that. These are public institutions only. And again, the dual enrollment coursework that's offered across the state is robust. It runs the gamut from English, math, history, kind of the general, general, what you would call general ed very generally, all the way to more specialized offerings that are often offered by the universities. And even though these can be offered anywhere, they can be offered on campus, at the high school, online, the majority of these dual enrollment courses are offered during the school day, most often at the high school. Kind of a side note, a tangent a little bit, is the way that we collect this data at THEC and at the Department will begin to change and evolve. We will have much better data moving forward, particularly with regard to online offerings. So, there were some comments made at a prior meeting about this map, that some of these counties may be served by online courses for dual enrollment students. That's very true. We just do not have that reflected in our data. So, I wanted to make that caveat as well. Okay. Benefits to dual enrollment, just very generally, include increased post-secondary persistence. Once students enroll, if they take dual enrollment while they're in high school, once they enroll in post-secondary education, they are more likely than their peers to persist, they're more likely than their peers to graduate, and because they come in with credits accumulated on the, on the front end, their time to degree is decreased. Now, I know some people might be thinking, well, of course, this is the case because you just said that these students are higher achieving, they aspire to be at a university and all of that. I will spare everybody a statistics lesson, but we controlled for all of that as best we, that was a joke. Okay, it's been a long day. Okay. We controlled for all of that as best we could to really isolate the effect of dual enrollment itself. And so, we do see that there is a strong relationship between taking dual enrollment courses and these post-secondary outcomes, to say nothing of the K-12 outcomes related to GPA, related to graduation, et cetera. Okay. So, as I mentioned, there are many, many, many opportunities with regard to dual enrollment, and they're essentially the opposite of everything I said before. So, a student who does not meet the profile of the student engaging in dual enrollment are those students who could very much be served in ways that they are not currently. Those are students who are male, non-white, low-income, lower ACTs or lower high school GPAs, first-generation students, and particularly those students who don't necessarily want to earn a bachelor's degree, they don't aspire to attend a university, they aspire to enroll at a TCAT or a community college, really thinking about the best courses that can serve those students while they're still in high school. I mentioned the geography piece of it, that there are counties that are underserved or unserved by dual enrollment. And in all of that, there are many opportunities for collaboration, which I'll talk about in a second, between different higher education entities. So, in the spirit of putting together a strategic plan, to Mike's point a moment ago, we have convened a dual enrollment task force, we being the Governor's Office, THEC, and some legislative representation have convened a task force to really dive into all of these issues and really think from a solutions perspective, a solution-oriented perspective, about the, the best way to get a plan together to best serve dual enrollment students across the state, those who are currently engaged in dual enrollment, as well as those who I mentioned a second ago, who are not yet engaged. So, there are four pillars that I'll just touch on very, very briefly to our proposed strategic plan. We are meeting again in a few weeks to discuss all of this much more, in much greater depth. But expanding access to dual enrollment, again, thinking about those schools and those counties in which these courses are not offered, and thinking about those students who do not currently have access for reasons other than geography. And a piece of that could be thinking about what is actually required to take dual enrollment? How does one become eligible to take dual enrollment? Is it a guidance counselor saying, yes, you can, or no, you can't? Or are there different parameters? And I wouldn't dare to speak to any of that in a room full of K-12 folks, because I don't know anything about that. The second would be to establish a much more common slate of dual enrollment offerings. As I mentioned, it really runs the gamut from an English 10-10 or an English 101-type course, all the way to much more specialized courses being offered at some high schools. Reducing the number of options could standardize and just make more accessible to the student what the dual enrollment offerings are. In doing that, there could be very explicit and very obvious intentional ways for two-year institutions and four-year institutions to partner, or for TCATs to partner with community colleges, to then partner with the universities. There are many, many opportunities when we think about the actual course offerings with regard to dual enrollment. This is not just a K-12 issue, this is not just a higher ed issue. I think this is a very positive and very good example, a very profound example of the intersection between the worlds that we all walk in, the K-12 side and the higher ed side. So, really thinking about what this needs to look like on the ground, at the district level, at the school level, at the regional level, in terms of serving the needs of the students who are enrolled in a given district. So, dual enrollment might not be for everyone, AP might not be for everyone, IB may not be for everyone, but when we think about these EPSOs being offered to students, we really need higher ed and K-12 to talk to each other about the best way to serve local students best. And finally, to steal a line from Mike, when we talk about Tennessee Promise, simplicity is the key in that message, and the way the dual enrollment grant is structured currently is that students can take two dual enrollment courses for free. My money would be that, on many students not actually knowing that. And perhaps I'm wrong, but just being very clear to these students that you can take two courses for free, and you will then enter higher education with six credits, eight credits, whatever it is, depending on the courses that they take. So, a lot of this just has to do with clarity of communication, clarity of messaging around the grant pieces of dual enrollment and the affordability of taking two courses. We can have a whole other presentation about whether that should be three, four, five, six unlimited courses, but right now, it's two, as well as what those opportunities are. And finally, there are some financial implications to this, both on the K-12 side and the higher education side. This will be an issue that we do dive into at these subsequent task force meetings. I mentioned the grant, the first two courses are free, the third is subsidized, and the fourth is, there is no subsidy for the fourth course currently. There are always conversations, always projections, always some modeling done about what would happen if we change it to A, B, C, D, E, many, many scenarios. I'm sure we will continue those conversations. As well as the outcomes-based funding formula, the way in which public institutions receive their appropriation via the THEC funding formula, the community colleges currently have that as a piece of their funding, whereas the universities do not. So, there are many conversations to be had about how to treat that moving forward, to manipulate that, if at all, to modify that, not manipulate that, if at all, moving forward. So, the next steps are two more task force meetings, one in a couple of weeks in August and one later in the fall, likely in October. As I mentioned, the outcome of these task force meetings is to be a strategic plan related to dual enrollment. And in the spirit of collaboration, as we are all here today, sharing and collaborating, I think this has been a really profound example, as I mentioned, of collaboration between the Department of Ed and the THEC teams, particularly the research teams, coming together to think very explicitly about how do we study dual enrollment, but more broadly, how do we study EPSOs more generally, particularly thinking about the needs of the students and the benefit to different types of students when we think about different types of EPSOs. So, I realize that was very fast, but I'm happy to take any questions. I'm also happy to follow up offline if people have particular questions about particular institutions or anything like that.
Bobby B.
I'm a full supporter of dual enrollment. I think it's great. One of the challenges I recall it used to have was getting acceptance at all universities for credits that were taken dual enrollment. Is there an effort to expand that or to work that issue?
So, that is definitely a topic of conversation. When we think about the slate of courses that are offered, the intent behind that would be to very explicitly align that to transfer pathways such there is, such that there is no conversation about whether something is accepted or not. So, more to come on that, for sure.
Any other questions, comments?
Do you have one brief question, Emily? When, with the committee that is considering these options, I assume, my assumption from what you were saying is that they are looking at and addressing those particular groups that are being underserved at this time?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
So, I just wanted to make that point, that, that is an area that I think is essential, that we look at where students do not have the opportunities or are not getting the information. One of the areas that I encourage consideration, because we've seen this in extensive work that we've done with dual enrollment in East Tennessee, is that textbooks are a critical factor. So, while we say that the first two courses are free, the textbook is sometimes the decisive factor in whether or not an underserved student gets to participate. There are some things we can do around that, and I think that it's really important that we look at those opportunities.
Excellent. Well, point well-made, absolutely.
There is also a requirement in ESA around EPSOs, which I think, if, if you want to speak to that commissioner, because I know that the districts that I work with, they're on top of that, and they understand the mandate because it's ACT of 21 or above, four EPSOs, two in, two with certifications. Do you want to say something to that?
Right, that's part of the Tennessee's plan under the Every Student Succeeds Act. That's the Ready Graduate Indicator noted earlier, and that's why I think we're so appreciative of the partnership with higher education, because it's been one that we've needed, and this has pushed us. We've set an accountability measure. We've set an accountability measure, and we've worked with our districts to say, we have to meet this for all students. And now higher ed and lower ed is really working together well on something that we can manage, and we can actually set a vision for and align to it. So very appreciative of the work we're doing.
Thank you. Other comments? Thank you, Dr. House. Last but not least, Tennessee Pathways, Mr. Zachary Adams.
I've always been told they save the best for last, so hopefully I live up to that expectation. My name is Zachary Adams. I'm on the Tennessee Pathways team at the Department of Education, and I'm here today to share a little bit about the relaunch and rebranding of the Tennessee's Pathways work and pooling that work under the Drive 55. But before I do that, I'm going to spend some time talking about the background work of Pathways and what we've been able to accomplish over the last five years, give you a sense of where we've had success across the state in bringing education and workforce together to collaborate and create opportunities for students, and what some challenges have been in that work as well, because both of those are guiding the way in which this work evolves as we move forward under the Drive 55. The Pathways work is not new. It began in Tennessee in 2012 after the release of Harvard's Pathways to Prosperity Report that really highlighted the skills gap between how students were being prepared at post-secondary institutions and what employers were expecting of those students once they entered the workforce. And so this was a call to action that Tennessee took very seriously and began to engage with communities across the state in regional pathways networks. Over the last five years, we've expanded to seven of the nine economic regions of the state, engaging local post-secondary institutions, K-12 leaders, and area businesses to find the best ways to make clear connections between K-12, post-secondary, and local employers to ensure that students are ready for careers in those communities. We've had pockets of success in places like the Upper Cumberland region and in Rutherford County, but there have been several challenges that have persisted with this work and is, are driving the conversation as we think through this rebrand and relaunch. The first challenge is around the branding and awareness of the Pathways work. As we've been engaging with communities, it's been unclear what is different about these sorts of conversations as opposed to the work that they're already doing. Additionally, we created this framework to help guide conversations around what opportunities students should be having from K through 12 to prepare for post-secondary. But as you can see, there's a lot of inputs and outputs with regard to this framework. And so we're working to simplify the messaging around this with the relaunch of our Pathways work and pooling under the Drive 55. So all that to say, we are thrilled that this work is being pooled under the governor's Keystone Education Initiative. What we're hoping that this signals, and what we're working to ensure this signals with the community leaders that we've been engaged with, is that the work of Pathways is really about ensuring that today's students are ready for tomorrow's Tennessee, and that they will be the civic and really the economic engine of our state. This work feels to us to be a natural progression in our progress on two of our strategic goals at the department. The first around ensuring that the majority of the students from the class of 2020 are earning a degree or credential, and that the statewide average on the ACT is a 21. We believe that the Pathways work is the next step in ensuring that students are seamlessly enrolling in post-secondary and prepared for the rigor of the coursework once they're at those institutions. Tennessee has been a leader in high school graduation rates, and a lot of the conversations in our Pathways work revolves around the number of students who are seamlessly enrolling in post-secondary and persisting to and through college and earning a degree or credential. What this graph is showing is biquartile on eighth grade, on the eighth grade math and, of course, exam, where students are ending up at high school graduation, persisting into college, and completing their degree. What you see is that regardless of where students are academically in the K-12 space, there's a, there's an equal downward trend for all of those subgroups in persisting in post-secondary and completing and earning a degree. What we're hoping to do with Tennessee Pathways is continue to engage post-secondary institutions and employers to find specific ways that we can be helping students in their path to post-secondary and ultimately into career. And so our work is guided by a theory of action that states that if school districts, post-secondary institutions, and employers are coordinating efforts to provide all students with college and career advisement, access to early post-secondary opportunities, and early career exposure, like work-based learning and apprenticeships, then students should start to access high-quality careers after post-secondary at higher rates and contribute to Tennessee's economy. We are simplifying our message around those three key levers that I mentioned from our theory of action. We're providing targeted support to districts around how they are building out a structure of college and career advisement from K through 12, the types of early post-secondary opportunities they're offering their students, and how and when students are exploring careers and preparing for the world of work. And finally, we're working with districts to expand their capacity around how they engage employers and create better effective partnerships with post-secondary institutions so that we are expanding these opportunities at a rate in which more students are able to access them. With that in mind, the state is investing $1.9 million to support this work. We will be hiring nine regional coordinators that will be deployed into each of the economic regions of the state. And these individuals are going to be able to tailor their support around those three key levers I just mentioned, and really work with schools and districts based on what their current strengths are and where there are opportunities for particular schools and districts. This work is also meant to align and support the Ready Graduate Indicator, and so we've set a bar for what we believe students should be experiencing in K-12, and the Pathways work is going to help support that. At the state level, we're going to continue to provide districts with Drive 55 reports that give them a snapshot of where students are going after high school. These reports will be used by the regional coordinators to help tailor their support and technical assistance, technical assistance to schools and districts. Additionally, we're creating a new reward and recognition structure for schools and districts. We are going to be certifying Tennessee Pathways at the high school level and creating a designation that districts can earn. And this is really meant to reward and recognize schools and districts that are leading the way in expanding access and equity to post-secondary and persistence in post-secondary to ultimately earn that degree or credential and be prepared for the workforce. A pathway, when we say that we are looking to certify Pathways, we're looking to make sure that all students have access to clear and guided pathways that are leading to high-quality careers. A high-quality career is one that a student is able to earn a livable wage when they're in the workforce and they have opportunities for advancement. A certified pathway is going to have several key components. The first is access to early post-secondary opportunities that align and prepare a student for their particular post-secondary major that they're interested in, and access to early career exposure, again, aligned to the career that they're interested in. The designation is the district-level reward, and this focuses at a structural level on the advisement that students are receiving from K through J to prepare for post-secondary and career, the rigorous academic and quality instruction that students are exposed to, and the ways in which cross-sector partnerships are penetrating more than just the high school, and students in middle school and elementary school are being exposed to careers as well. The timeline for this work is beginning this fall, really in the next few weeks. We'll be starting to hire these regional coordinators and training them to support schools and districts. We will begin the certification of the Pathways process in the spring, and the designation the following fall. The thought there is to create a feedback loop for districts and schools to really provide their input on what the metrics and measures for this designation and certification should look like, and how the support of the regional coordinator should be tailored to, to help them achieve their goals and ensure that all of their students are transitioning to the post-secondary option of their choice, and ultimately into a career. Finally, we believe that success is going to reduce the friction between K-12, post-secondary, and employers, and allow for effective partnerships that's creating more opportunities for students. And we believe that this work is going to build the capacity of school and district leaders in their college and career planning for students. We'll know we're successful if this Pathways work starts to move the needle, not only on our department's goals, but that we see students are contributing to the governor's goal of ensuring that 55% of Tennesseans are earning a degree or credential by 2025. If you have questions, I'll take them now, but you're also welcome to contact us and interact with us on social media.
I know we're running out of time, but I have to make comments.
Yes.
Since I've had the opportunity to work with Zachary, in my day job, we were early adopters of Pathways to Prosperity, working in the Upper Cumberland and serving in the role of an intermediary. I can tell you that what Zachary has said absolutely works, because you convene higher ed with K-12 and employers, you get them in the same room, you get them talking to one another, and it's truly transformational what happens. Everybody parks their ego at the door, and everyone's listening to one another, and the partnerships just continue to grow. There are changes that have happened in the school districts because of Pathways and programs that are working, that are now implemented, that would not, would not have been there without Pathways. Several of our high schools now have Mechatronics, and we have a pipeline of students, students of over 1,000 in that pipeline, getting ready for careers in advanced manufacturing, and they're graduating with dual enrollment, and there are industry certifications. Another quick example, because I know the hour is late, health science. We identified that we had a two-year nursing degree program gap, pushing and prodding. We finally have been successful in getting one of our two-year community colleges, because it's expensive to offer nursing, to seek approval to offer a two-year nursing degree program in the Upper Cumberland, and they're in the, I think, the middle phases of that approval process, but they've already seeking to hire a dean, so I'm incredibly excited about that. But truly transformational, I believe it's the right way to go. I'm pleased to know that changes are taking place so that this can roll out across the entire state. Thank you. Other comments, questions?
Well, I would love to just say, Chairman Hartgrove, you've been an example of this and one that we point to. We just talked about Upper Cumberland, and that's really a testament to the work that you've done in that area that has shown us what we believe is possible if you are intentional and work directly with your higher ed and industry partner. So thank you for the work you've done. You're an example and model for the rest of us.
Thank you. No other comments, questions, other items? Thank you so much, Zachary. Then we are officially adjourned. Thank you all so much.